To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Heyhoe?
Here.
Toledo?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Levin?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Mulliner?
Here.
Deuter?
Here.
Beremus?
Here.
Leader?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Bram?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. On to Agenda Item 3. Receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who has any written communications from the public? Seeing none, I know we have an overflow. Can Mr. Cop hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Cop, do we have anybody in the annex with written communications?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Seeing none, we will move on to public forum. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience, or anybody on a dial-in, or anybody in the annex, to address the council on any item they so choose. Specifically, we ask that you address your comments to the chair, out of respect for the work that we have to get done this evening, and respect for others who may want to talk. We ask that you keep those comments to three minutes. We are recording this, but we ask that you state your name and spell it if you think you need to when you address us. Address is optional. I'll start with the annex, because you never know with technology. Mr. Cop, is there anybody on the line who wishes to address the council in public forum?
There is nobody on the line.
Okay. Is there anybody in the annex who wishes to-
There is nobody in person.
Okay, so nobody online, no one across the hall. Is there, Clerk Tamer, did anybody sign up for public forum this evening?
No, mayor.
Okay, nobody signed up for public forum. Is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign in to our public forum, but wishes to address the council? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, we're going to close public forum. We're going to go on to announcements. Agenda Item 5. Any announcements from the dyes?
Just a general announcement that the American Legion has started a car show again on Saturday, so if people are available on Saturday morning from 11 o'clock until 3 o'clock, they're doing a car show.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. There it is. Any aldermen participating online? Do you have any announcements?
I do not, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds like a no. Okay, on to Agenda Item 6. We have a swearing-in. It's a promotion, actually, and I'm going to ask Lieutenant Dan Vogel, soon-to-be Lieutenant Dan Vogel, and his family to meet me right up front here.
You want to tell us who we have with us?
Hi, my mother and father, John, Lisa, my brother Timothy, and sister.
Before we get started, certainly your rest of your family lining up. Couple things I'd like to have around you, swearing-in, fire-fighting, promoting with them, is I quote Edward Croker, who was a fighter captain, turned into a country, the last country.
Mayor, if I could-
Oh, look at this. Thanks, Jim. Testing. I know we're recording, so I have to use this. So what I would say about Edward Croker, one of his famous quotes is, "When a man becomes a fireman..."
When a man becomes a fireman, his greatest act of bravery has been accomplished. When he does that, it's all in the line of work. First thing about that, especially during these crazy times, I see the department, I think my mind goes to, where are they going from what's happened? The way I think of it is, this pandemic affects people, is that I can only imagine the people who are making the call and the relief that they have from these moments. I know they're at their wits' end mentally, and it gets to the point where you have to get a phone call early, and our firefighters show up. And that's what I think of why I see firefighters in their trucks driving by us when they're in the city. The other thing, I said it's all in the line of work. It's been a little bit of these days, speaking of all in the line of work, all the firefighters now wear masks. Inside the fire station, they're responding to incidents, protecting both the firefighters, firefighters, and all the residents. We equip our reserve ambulance in case we have to transport people during this pandemic, or maybe just a fight of war. We have our firefighters, our liaison with the infection, without a trial. Our community right now, they come here at City Hall, not only in the greeting, they're taking temperatures and supporting the safety of our employees. We purchase decontamination devices, calling all the fire departments to be shut down, and they're used in fire stations, our fire trucks, and throughout city businesses. We're disinfecting twice a day at the fire department. We split the room from the fire department. Every time we transfer a finishing, we sanitize. We purchase additional personal protective equipment. Contact with our local seniors and senior living facilities to make sure they're okay. We're circulating a newsletter about what's happening. Our command staff has weekly meetings with DuPage, County Health. So that's all stuff that's new additions to the line of work. And I think it's great that we can stand here today, we can promote somebody for it. And President, very good for the fire department and our firefighters. Thank you for that, and I wish, and Dan, who is here, reach your right hand. I, Dan Vogel-
Dan Vogel.
-disultimately swear.
Disultimately swear.
You uphold the Constitution of the United States?
I uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the City of Elmhurst?
And the ordinances of the City of Elmhurst.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties-
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire and Crime?
Of the Office of Fire and Crime.
According to the best of my building.
According to the best of my building.
Congratulations. We're going to do the socially-distanced pick, so we're going to bring your family up here, stand accordingly. And normally, we have some pictures of groups, and/or shake you all in the camp, but I think they're going to give you a comfy wave. I'm going to lord over you like this. Don't read anyone. Smile. Wait, what about the creepy guy in the back? Congratulations.
Harder than it looks, with all this mask stuff. Okay, we're going to let them file out. Hey, Mr. Cop, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I think there was one or two people who were socially distancing out in the hallway, waiting for the firefighters to file out. Obviously, they're more than welcome in if you happen to see them.
Yeah, they'll be coming in once the clear is out.
Oh, they want to... All right, chief, went out to grab them. We're going to get started. On to Agenda Item 7. This is the consent agenda at this time. Is there any items on the consent agenda? Any alderman wishes to pull, to vote no, or provide further comment? Alderman Bram.
710 and 717.
710 and 717. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 710 and 717. Motion, Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. Clerk Tamer.
Heyhoe?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Alderman Park? Well, we have a quorum without her, but let me do a double check.
No, no, aye. I'm sorry.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm having a hard time hearing everybody, but there we go.
Okay. Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Consent agenda is approved, minus Item 7.10 and 7.17. On to Agenda Item 7.10. This is a report out of Public Affairs. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Public Affairs and Safety Committee that the City Council approve the $118,364 increase to the Metro Paramedic Services, Inc. contract and authorize the city attorney to prepare the necessary documents for City Council approval. Signed, Danny Palmski, Chair; Marty Deuter, Vice Chair; and Elder Woman Tina Park, Ward 5.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Palmski, second by Alderman Deuter. Alderman Palmski, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a report to reflect a one-time increase to offset the starting rate for paramedics and the associated payroll and fees with that, to administer that pay. I defer to Alderman Bram to hear his question.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this report. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, I think overall, the general concept of this report is a good one, and that is to make sure that Metro is paying paramedics a competitive wage in order to attract the best candidates and retain candidates for an extended period of time. The concern or issue I have with this is, however, why is the City of Elmhurst amending, or what is being proposed, is for the City of Elmhurst to amend their contract with Metro, to give back some of the subsidy to allow for this increase to happen. The contract itself, to my understanding, does not state that the City of Elmhurst has to assist in the pay rate for the paramedics. This is a very serious issue. In various different discussions, this has been discussed, albeit ALS versus BLS, et cetera. So I do understand the sensitivity and the need to attract and maintain the best paramedics for all of our residents. However, with that stated, I don't feel that it's the City of Elmhurst's duty to amend a contract that they're currently in with Metro to pay for that increase. I think that it is up to Metro to find a way, albeit if it is a pay rate increase, or however is done, to meet the requirements that they set forth within the agreement with the City of Elmhurst, and that is to have qualified, or above-qualified, paramedics supplied to the City of Elmhurst at all times. So I am not in support of this amendment. Again, I am not saying that the concept is a bad one, because obviously, I, as well as everyone, would agree that health and safety is a number-one priority. However, I don't agree that the City of Elmhurst should be taking dollars away to pay, to allow for Metro to do this. This is part of their business plan. They need, when they signed the dotted line on that agreement, they understood that pay rates increase, or I believe they understood that that happens, and the environment changes. So I cannot support this, only from the perspective that I don't believe that we, the City of Elmhurst, should be paying for this increase. Metro, it's up to their business plan to accommodate this.
Additional comments? Alderman Palmski.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Alderman Bram's points. These were discussed in committee two. In looking at the existing contract, which was extended when we added Rescue One, so, first of all, about the subsidy, that is written in the contract to be, it's really calculated after the fact, about, you know, well, a year to two years, you know, after the fact. So it's not that we're giving back a current subsidy, because I would have the same thought, too, to say, all right, I remember February, why are we adjusting this when there is that money there? So that is based on, you know, two years ago. So the subsidy, or the, you know, any checkback or anything over 5% at the end of a contract year, isn't really tied to this. As far as the need to increase, Metro has been, has signed other contracts that are moving into this model, to come up with a base pay rate. We are aware that we are losing, or we are not attracting qualified medics like we would be able to if we knew the rate, if they knew the rate was higher. We do have in the report what we expect to be in the ordinance, which is, let me find it. This will be a straight pass-through to Metro's employees assigned to the City of Elmhurst, and will also offset costs directly related to the salary increases, including payroll taxes and workers' comp insurance. So it's not that this is spread out for the overall management of the program. That is directly for the staff assigned to Elmhurst.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, I ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 7.10 is approved. On to 7.17. This is an ordinance. I would ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to Section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Bram, you pulled this ordinance. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, as I mentioned in past City Council meetings, I am not in support of continuing or extending the executive powers, at least at this time. I asked for a list of what the executive orders have been, and it's a little bit unclear because some of the dates were conflicting, but it looks like the last one was in July. I think that we have the abilities within our current processes, as we see on tonight's agenda, in order to pass something quicker than normal. And what I mean by that is, we can pass a report and resolution or ordinance in the same evening if needed. There hasn't been an issue since the beginning of COVID, and as I stated in the past, I believe this was needed in the beginning of COVID, but at this time, it seems to me that anything that has been communicated from a state level, that we are able to handle within our current processes, and this is no longer needed at this time. Thank you.
Okay, any additional comments? Anyone on the phone? Clerk Tamer?
Heyhoe?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Levin?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Beremus?
Aye.
Leader?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Bram?
No.
Palmski?
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, one nay, zero absent.
Thirteen ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 7.17 is approved. On to reports and recommendations. 8.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. One quick item tonight. We are holding a preliminary meeting regarding an engineering study for the construction of a new sidewalk between North Avenue and, I'm sorry, along North Avenue, between Lake Street and I-90 westbound. Purpose of this meeting is to introduce the project to the public and present the project's schedule, existing conditions, and proposed improvements. We are having this meeting August 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and it's going to be here at City Hall, and weather permitting, we will be having it outdoors and appropriately social-distanced. That's it for me. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. As everyone knows, a week ago today, we had a horrific storm come through town at about 3:30 in the afternoon. We experienced close to 100 mile-an-hour winds in the western suburbs, and in fact, they did confirm that a tornado touched down in Lombard. It does appear that it picked up before it got to Elmhurst, thankfully. But the storm did quite a bit of damage in the short time that it was here. Immediately after the storm, we had approximately 10,000 customers within Elmhurst out of power. There's approximately 15,000 to 16,000 customers in Elmhurst, just to give you an idea of the damage that it did. Took out quite a few trees, as all the aldermen know. I appreciate everything that, all the contact that was made by the City Council to me and to the Public Works that really helped us to assign crews. ComEd was in touch with us immediately. I appreciate everything that Cynthia Thomas did to keep in communication with me. You know, it wasn't ideal for everyone, but she was doing her best to keep up with us in Lombard and Glen Ellen and everything she had in the Glenbard area. Monday night, ComEd made the decision to open the Joint Operations Center, which is, at least for this time, it was a virtual Joint Operations Center. It would typically be held at the county OEM, Office of Emergency Management, area. And what that involves is municipalities communicating with the Joint Operations Center to get critical facilities in line and prioritized. We're very fortunate in Elmhurst that we have, and over the last few years, we've put a lot of backup power on our facilities, and that helped us tremendously. So City Hall was able to operate, police stations, fire stations were able to operate, most of our pump systems were able to operate. And we're very blessed that we didn't get a lot of rain with this storm, because with the amount of people that were out of power, that could have caused even more problems. But outside of ComEd and their efforts, I really want to thank the Public Works Department for everything they did. Granted, police and fire were out chasing calls all day long, and I appreciate what they did. The Public Works Department has worked round the clock, along with some contractors, to clear the areas of trees. First was public safety issues, street clearing, then helping ComEd to get trees off of wires, so that ComEd could do their job, and then they switched to just general cleanup of the area. We all saw some pretty interesting pictures of the devastation around town that happened. So even now, we continue to focus on cleaning up from the storm damage. Over the weekend, our partners with Republic Waste Hauling came into town. They had nine trucks in town, clearing branches. They started on the south end, and they're working their way north. They will pick up during the regular pickup, but they're also going to come in the next couple of Saturdays to help out as well. So they will do the middle part of town, that typically, that has their pickup on Wednesday, this coming Saturday, and then Saturday after that, they'll get to the north side. They collected 24 tons of tree debris this past Saturday. That was just from the south end. And you'll still see some large limbs that are out there. Those are things, those are items that Republic couldn't take, and our crews will come back and get those. And we're working, I want to thank the Park District as well for partnering with us to give us areas as a lay-down yard for those. So again, I want to remind the public that if you see any branches that are hanging, and you haven't called them in, please do. We are getting around town to get to all those branches, but certainly, a call to City Hall will help us to prioritize those. And the last thing I'll say is, thank you for your patience out in the community. We are getting to that. We knew it was going to take a couple or few weeks to get around to everything, but we do appreciate all the help. Thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? Any other reports from the dyes? Alderman Toledo?
Just a clarifying question for what Mr. Grabowski went through. The pickup on the parkway for branches that homeowners have placed, that's Saturday.
Correct, Saturday.
Throughout the whole city.
Yeah, I would recommend that they bring them out now, and just leave them on the parkway. I know that it may not be the most sightly thing, but we'll get to them as we can, and we may get to them before Saturday, and I would hate for a resident to miss that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone online with a report? Seeing none, we will go on to ordinances. 9.1, I'd ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving a final planned, start, 9.1Z0-21-2020. An ordinance approving a final planned unit development for the construction of an addition to a warehouse upon the property commonly known as 600 North County Line Road, Elmhurst, Illinois, McMaster Car Supply Company. See Item 7.5.
To put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the McMaster car PUD process that we approved tonight. They requested if we could also approve the ordinance, since there's a significant construction project, so it could get started as soon as possible. So that is why it is ordinance as well as a report tonight. So we ask for your support. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, just a comment on this particular case. I think it's important in our legislative process that we go through the report and then the resolution or ordinance, so that we have some time and can take a couple looks at an issue. This particular case, we are approving the report and the ordinance in the same night. However, this is the third look we've had at it, both in a report stage and then an ordinance stage, as well as the Zoning and Planning Commission. So this has gone through a lot of scrutiny, umpteen times, and thus, I feel pretty comfortable. pretty comfortable, um, working with the applicant to, to make sure they can get started as soon as possible, and it's a very good project for the city.
Alderman Levin.
Thank you. I will somewhat echo Alderman Dunn's comment. I think that we probably more frequently than in the past put items on the agenda for both approval of a report and an ordinance on the same night. For whatever committee, I think it's a good idea if we state in the report the reason why we are recommending action on the same night. Um, I'm not voting against this one, uh, but I think it should be a reason like, uh, there's, uh, you know, the, the foundation has to get in the ground before winter, there's a price increase in supply, there's a public safety issue, um, not just because an applicant wants a project to go forward. Um, there is a reason for having the two-week separation of, that's, I mean, I won't go through it, I think everyone knows that, uh, it allows people to consider the report, and we've seen instances where things change between the report and the resolution. So although I will certainly support this one, I may not in the future if there's not a good reason.
Okay, any other comments? Anyone online? I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call a vote.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park. Alderman Park.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Beremus.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Brahm.
Aye.
Palmski.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, zero absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. Uh, agenda item nine point one is approved. On to ten point, other business, ten point one. Anyone, any other business? Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I first wanna thank, uh, Elmhurst residents who have shared their views of racial injustice, uh, with this, uh, uh, council. I wanna take a few minutes and just share my perspective on the topic. Personally, I'm working hard to open my mind, educate myself, and participate in a movement to address racial just, injustice. I've been motivated by the following. First being my employer, Workday. Workday has inspired me to be a better leader by focusing on diversity and inclusion in the workplace. My eyes have been opened by fellow Workday colleagues sharing stories of how they have been discriminated against in their lives. My workmates are well-educated, very successful, and respected, yet they are still subject to racism. It's clear something's broken. The second influence was the horrific death of George Floyd. This was very upsetting and, uh, very unacceptable to me. In my search to educate myself, I'm seeking out people to discuss the topic. I'm reading, listening to podcasts. I've come across this phrase a couple of times and find it insightful. People aren't born with racist ideas or attitudes. Racism is something that is learned. I believe everyone has subconscious biases, and the more we understand that about ourselves, the better citizens will become in our community. The topic of racism can be uncomfortable to open, openly talk about. It can be such a polarizing topic. It can be extremely emotional. For our society to, to address racial injustice, we must come together, control our emotions, and discuss the problems, understand them, and put measures in place to begin to fix them. Before yielding my time, I, I wanna be very clear on one topic. I believe our city staff, this includes police and fire, does a fabulous job delivering services to our residents. Are there opportunities to improve? Of course there are. I think it's reasonable to strive for excellence. This will always foster a culture of doing better. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other business? Anyone online? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Cahill. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, I'm sorry. Opposed? Who wants to stay longer? Hearing none, motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you.